Madam Sekretari, Sekretari please call the roll.
Mister Chair, uh for duration, this is approved. Check. Uh before we will have the roll call, uh recite the Councillor's creed because this is the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, I'm sorry, um... Anyone from the staff, sa coffee, sa place may your sleep now?
Vice Mayor, Councillor, Councillor's creed.
I am a Vice Mayor and I am confident that my people is to devote myself to the public service by divine providence and by the will of the people. I am mandated to recite over the local legislative that would be decrepit and statesmanship. I will lead the local legislative to enact measures and ordinance for the common people and fulfill my people's aspiration for happiness, peace, prosperity. May that the Almighty God help me concentrate myself for the people I am called to serve.
I am a Philippine Councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that were down to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official act. And as I head the pathways of local legislations, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people.
Madam Sekretari, um please call the roll.
Good morning to this Honorable body. Honorable Francis Troy Oligario is on COVID. Honorable Sherry Bosin Hatzim. Honorable Glen Ayam Sabihon. Honorable Pari Dang Palan. Honorable Natan Ralba. Honorable Sarafin Ramos. Honorable Dayan Catalonia. Honorable Yoni Fredo Chong. Honorable Juan Pablo Vega. Honorable Washington Duarte. Honorable Etamay Capri is on scale. Honorable Susie Chin. One, two, three, four, five, six. Mister Chair, there are six present.
Since majority of this body is not yet here, I would like to call recess for wait for artists to come. (Música) Madam Sekretari, um please call the roll again.
Yes sir, with the presence of Honorable Bad Chong, you are now in quorum, sir.
Considering the majority of these members of this body is present, the Chair now declares quorum. Um, Mr. Flor, for the adoption of business.
This for today.
Um, this motion passed by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Bual, any discussion? Amendments, objection? There being none, motion approved.
Honorable Chair, I move for the suspension of the rule to accommodate our visitor.
Rule suspended.
Honorable Chair, first visitor for today is in person of Norashir Malai from Puruk Greenfield Sanito, IPN3 applicant.
Sir, you are not acknowledged na, you may have the floor now.
Pwede resume.
Good morning to each and everyone, I am Norashir A. Malali. I am twenty-four years old, I live in Puruk Greenfield Sanito.
So, um last time ano'to sir, ang katong sa ikaw ang mga applicant?
Yes, po.
Um, nangkutan na lang may kwan ba, ang katong imo ang, um, patong mga, sa tawag na eh?
Komulik, sir.
Komulik?
Yes.
Na, na, kwan nabadi mo? Na nabadiha?
Wala. Pero hindi tiyong tita ka na para mag, ay sir mag...
So, what's the pleasure of the body? Is, um, is about the katong sa applicant last time, na, na ulang ang requirements niya sa kwan?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dang Palan, you are recognized.
Uh, can we let the aunt of our applicant speak? Kay mo na ang atong ipangyayari sa iyahah?
Ma'am, you may have the floor.
She is Mrs. Marlin Kalonghe, the wife of the late Limbong Kalonghe of Mabuhay.
Good morning, honorables. Um, sir, good morning. I am Marlin Kalonghe, the Puruk President of Puruk Greenfield Sanito. So, I hereby together with my nephew to certify that he is already, um, live in my brother's house almost one year. Um, we just apologize that he come again because he, he went together with his father to the other city, um, in Kutabato. And then when he arrive again on March, so he will be late for the registration. And then, since I'm his auntie and the Puruk President of the Puruk Greenfield, so I promise to you all, um, my, my nephew, sorry, my nephew will be, um, registered this coming after the barangay election. That's it. So, I am hoping to ask you, um...
Can you issue a certification that is bono?
Yes, it's already sir. We had already, um, given to him the Puruk certificate and then after that, he already get the barangay clearance. And then his, um, our Puruk certificate after he get the Puruk, uh, barangay clearance, they already get, and then already, already barangay clearance to give him.
So, what's the pleasure of the body? Any query?
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dang Palan, you are recognized.
Maybe in lieu of the barangay clearance, may we request for a certificate of presidency from the barangay?
Um, we had already, yes.
Barangay Residency Certificate?
Uh, barangay, yes, we have, but I, we have already, he had already. It's almost a years. Yes, um, he went in, he stayed, um, he decided to stay in our, in my brother's house, which in, which is in Puruk Greenfield, um, on August 2022.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dang Palan, you are recognized.
With the concern of Mrs. Mrs. Kalonghe, we will just give that matter to our floor leader being the Chairperson of the Committee on Peace and Order.
Okay, um, this matter will be referred to the Committee on Peace and Order.
Um... Honorable Chair, I know that this matter be referred to other matters during the other matters period.
This matter will be referred in other matters.
Thank you. Thank you very much, honorables. Thank you.
Next visitor, Mister Flor.
Honorable Chair, our next visitor here is in person of Restituto Alejandro Oikma. Mister Alejandro, sir, you take the rose room.
Before we, before that, um, may acknowledge the presence of Honorable Garcia. Sir, you may have the floor now.
Thank you. Good morning to this body, the floor leader and the president. And, uh, I am Restituto C. Alejandro Junior and a government employee of this municipality. At the same time, I am the Vice President of, uh, EPL Market, uh, Central, uh, EPL Central Market Association. In behalf of our President, uh, Mister Joel Abel, that, uh, he can come here to, uh, tungutsi hang panglawas, no? So, with the officers and, uh, members of our, uh, association, we come here for, uh, two issues. First, the question of, uh, the perspective or unse may tabo sa ato ng mercado publico nga nasunog. Kailaghi murag, until now, la miki balo, unse mga, uh, side plans nga din, uh, within, uh, June ten, mamahi mo naming one year naming stage sa mo ang, uh, temporary tools. So that's why, uh, we're praying nga mapadali unta ang mga construction so that, uh, di namin makaha, kunsa mo ang pamuyod din ha, within, uh, one year na nakaspiriens mioga. Panahon sa ulan, per tipong kusugas sa amo ang mga baligya mga basa, no? Then, uh, the same time, uh, kung parabot sa tinginit, per tipong init na tungut kay kaduol kayo sa sin, no? Murag kana ang amoy experience ya, within, uh, mag one year na karong, uh, pitchadex. So, seven ta karoon, three days more to go. So, we are praying nga unta mapadali ang paghimo sa construction din ha. Okay? Second, uh, we are praying also sa among query na last, uh, kano sa tong nagat to bidding his decision that the talipapa of, uh, barangay tiayon existing rangi hapon. So, gahangyo, gahapon niya na nga unta wala na mga talipapa arong, along the national highways of this municipality. Okay? So, murag kana raman siguro ang among query nga unta man matubag sa ato ang honorable body. Thank you and good morning.
So, what's the pleasure of the body, especially sa toang head sa committee sa public, um, public and market?
Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dang Palan, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, sir, sir Nonoy Alejandro, for your presence today and to other members and officers of the EPL Central Market Association. Uh, the first, uh, inquiry, uh, was the perspective, no, of the construction of the market. Uh, I, I assume that, uh, the bidding were already done. Of course, during the bidding, the, it was included in the perspective before the, uh, contractors will bid, no? So, it is a executive, uh, measure. Then, second, uh, about the talipapa in barangay tiayon, not only in barangay tiayon and other, uh, barangays along national highway of this municipality. Uh, uh, being the Chairperson on the Committee on Markets, Slaughterhouse, and Economic Enterprise, I've already told the mayor about that. Then, uh, it is a, it is, uh, a, a public knowledge that we as Sangunyang Bayan are only legislators and the implementor, uh, is the executive. So, that matter were, were already, uh, discussed with the Office of the Municipal Mayor and we will request, no, with the, with the indulgence of the officers and members of the EPL Central Market Association to please approach our executive to that matter. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Would you like to refer this to your committee?
Uh, of course, uh, then, pwed po sila mag-inquire kay mayor. Then, later part siguro pwede na mo madiscuss ni mayor. Pero mas ma, para at least satisfied, no? Satisfied ang atong officers and members sa EPL Central Market Association. Satisfied sila kunun sa ang maduhugikan kay mayor, kay, uh, kabaluta, even the municipal mayor. Eager na pwed kaayo siyang mag... Mike, eager na pwed kaayo si mayor mag... Uh, 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 no? Rehab ang atong EPL market that was started by fire last June ten, 2022. So, Mister Chair?
Yes, Honorable Dang Palan.
Let this matter, thank you, Ron. Let this matter be referred to this ends, uh, committee and of course, to satisfy our members and officers of, of, of the EPL Central Market Association. They can also approach our municipal mayor to that end. Thank you, Mister Chair.
And Honorable Chair, in addition,
Yes, Honorable Chong.
I move that, that, that a copy of the sentiments aired by Restituto Alejandro be, be furnished at the Office of the Mayor.
Okay. Um, this matter will be referred to the Office of the Mayor and to the Committee on Public Market. Okay, sir, thank you. Thank you for the visit. Next visitor, Mister Flor.
Honorable Chair, we have here another visitor. Next visitor, Honorable Chair, is in person of Marita L. Mendro, Acting Regional Director of NCIP.
Okay. Ma'am, um, you may have the floor now.
Mayor.
Say, 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 what's that? Uh, the Honorable Chairman, to the Honorable August Body, may I be permitted?
Yes, ma'am, you may have the floor now.
Yes, sir, so I, uh, with me is our Regional Hearing Officer and the presence of Attorney Maribel Idiang, Attorney, and, and our IPMR Vocal Person, Regional Vocal Person. And we are ready to answer queries regarding the IPMR issue of the municipality of EPL. Thank you po.
So... So, ma'am, I think, um, na ni sa, what, order of business for, um, calendar for business sa karoon, um, siguro maybe forward na lang na'to sa kwan, later na lang na.
Okay.
So, next visitor, Mister Flor?
Thank you po.
Ah, yes, okay. Next visitor, Mister Flor?
Honorable Chair, we have another visitor here in person of Emily LaHagan, EPL Heights.
Uh, ma'am, you may have the floor now.
From EPL Heights in Diageon Association.
Your knowledge.
Ma'am LaHagan, you have the floor.
Ma'am LaHagan, you may have the floor now.
Uh, good morning, Satanan. Uh, Satanang mga konsihalo. Satanandri nga naasa sulod. So, na ako karundiri nag-present kay mga yumig, kanang tabang or magpahibalon na po sa isbigay. Ang among EPL Heights Home Owner Association as President, gigamit sa lain tao sa personal. Dayon, wala pa dudrabas siya'y pangalan nga, aw, wala agid siya'y kanang renew. Gigamit lang niya ang Home Owners Association. So, muna nga kami, ningpresent mediri na akong mga co-officers sa likasagawas. Pati kaoban ako si Engineer Cordiero nga, nagpresent mediri para sa among kwan, uh, EPL Heights Home Owner Association. Actually, gahapon pa minakarinyo din he. Um, ang amawa lang manggong reklamo is na itao nga, na ngayo og kanang mga hinabangikan sa mga politiko. Dayon naasa iyang balagipangbutang, gigamit ang among EPL Heights Home Owner Association. Kinising, kiningtawhanan ni, nagtrabaho siya sa Kapitulyo, si Ramilkar muna. So, na ako'y mga kwan diri, na ako'y, dugog, nakita po na ko ni, uh, with your respect kay Vice Mayor, no? Kay, siya gi dun ta among tuyo atong una, ni An, ni Anhimi dayon, gi, gi advise mi nga pa ni Anhion mediri sa mga isbi. Para daw ang mga isbi, basig pangayuan po, dani mga tawhan na, dani tawhan na, pati yang asawa, dili na, matagan nga, inanaon pa nila. So, na ako'y mga, na ako'y mga papildiri nga, nagdawat siya kanang, gikan sa, gikan jud, atong kwan lang ni gikuha niya mga, uh, February, gikayo, gikuha niya, pareyani o, gi pangayon niya mo sa kwan, sa Kapitulyo, gi tagaan ni Anisaklet. Um, usak ang welding machine, og isakka grinder and drill. Tapos, naani sa ihang balay. Pero ang gigamit niya EPL Heights Home Owners Association. Siya ni si Ramilkar muna din, ang garesipan ni iyang kaliban, love and live in partner nga si Alunang Magalso. Di nakita pa na ko, excuse me, naasiya diri sa kwan, gi pasa ni sa ko ang mga co-officers po'd. Excuse me. Kuan, na, di siya gi pasa diri nila sa kuang nga, si kuan, si Vice Mayor, naluo'y sa EPL Heights Home Owner Association, naghatag og, duha ka straight light. Pero naasa iyang balay ni gitawod. Tapos, iyang gi pa, ingundiya sa mga tao, nga siya kunuo ang Chairman sa maong Association, ang problema wala sila'y papel. Dayon, ingnon niyang mga tao, kanang gilistan niya galga, pos good siya diya og, duha kabook nga, gi butang niya si Vice Mayor og si Gob. Ngasakuan, iyang ilako ng set of officers, ang iya pa dudong mga officers, dili paggybutante din he sa EPL. Na siya kinuha EPL, artilim, na itungawan, na apod siya'y kanang isla. Lima raka buok ang iyang butante din he. Dayon, ang iyang ikuwan nga, siya gi daw ang original, unya wala bagid siya'y papel. So, gahapon, ragid minakarinyo gikan sa kuan, doli. Diri po'd mi gahapon kay Ma'Madel, um, nag, nagreinyo po'd mi sa piso. So, kompleto mi papel, siya wala'y papel, pero siya kabalo manggo siya maghimo-himo ginani. Kaya kabalo siya mo pikig dokument, nakita po'd namo nga gi post niya nga, naka, nakarinyo dudaw siya, mo iyang mga, kanang mga pasabog sa iyahang mga tao para mutuo sa iyahah. So, si Vice po'd, gi tagaan po'd taon sila og, kanang kuan, kanang solar kay, si Vice naluo'y po'd nga. Para sa, ang nakabutang manggo'to, dito, uh, mga, thank you, by sagi hatag ni mo nga, duha ka solar. para sa, ang nakabutang manggud to, dito, ah, mga, thank you, by sa gi hatag ni mo nga, duha ka solar, para sa Epe Heights Homeowners Association, sa mga tao. Ang problema lang, naasi lang balay, ni agin ni mo karon nakatutok ng solar, di agit silang balay duha kabook. Wala git tayo napunta sa kuwan, sa Epe Heights nga, mga tao. Unya kung kinipod sila, ginadaw-daw pod niya tao, ni diha ang mga tao nga, wala pa minabot, excuse me, wala pa minabot din ha. Gi daw-daw pod nilang mga tao din ha, na siya'y, na siya'y gi pang, muna naasi lang mga co-officer diha kay, na siya gi papundakan, og kanang halubla, nga bata, kay ipapatay daw niya, gi sugo pod niya bata, pero siya'y nagsugo. Ang Vice President pod na ko, gi gukod na niya sundang. Oh, dayon, naaputo isang agiisyoan niya, filean siya kaso, iyang ginagukod. Niya, ginadlok niya baso, pagabot na mo din ha, ingon ko, ayun na mo, ay mo gadlok, sukol mo, motoning file sa lagkaso, mo file sa lagkaso din, gi patawag na na mo sa kapitan, kapila nakapatawag sa kapitan, diligid na siya mo atubang, kay di daw siya mo tuog kapitan. So, motoyin si kapitan, pag mapail ng kaso, mo file pod daw siya ng tawahan na. Kaya lang, murad padayon, manggud siya gagamit sa pangalan sa Epe Heights Homeowners Association, unya wa para bagid mi sukad-sukad na kapangayok, siya reggyo sige pangayok. Unya, ang kaluoy ba kay, ang nakabutang adriyo, receive by President, buti pasabot murad, ako'y garesip. Dayon, sila ramoy nagamit, naasi lang balay, dilipag jud siya member na mo, kay naghimo siya iyang kaugalingot. Excuse me. So, regarding pod sa mga kuwan diha, sa mga kwarta, nganong nagbulag sila diha kay, sa una siya maginagpaasip diha nga kuwan siya, ah, siya isak ka Chairman, gi himuang pod na siya og petition letter, na adri ang petition sa kuwan, papel, gi petitionan siya sa tanang mga tao. Niya dilig siya kadawat, muna ginagamit lang gehapon niya ang Epe Heights Homeowners Association. So, ang among hunahon, ang among hunahon na, baka mga ayaw na pod sa mga konsihal gamitin lang gehapon ang, ang Epe Heights Homeowners Association. So, muna ni present di dud mediri kay, murad, dilik na di dud mayayong iyang mga binuhatan. So, regarding, regarding pod sa kwarta, nganong nangasamok sila diha kay, since sinugdanan pa, kanasigihan niya kulikta ang mga taoong pubre din ha, demoto nga, ning bulag ang mga tao sa ayaha, kay sigihan niya kulikta ug kwarta. Pero, na ako regarding sa kwarta nga, ginakulikta niya, si Engineer Cordiero akong paisturyahon. Kay, siya di dud mismo na kay baluani kay, kung, o kung okay lang.
Engineer Cordiero, you may have the floor now. Is Engineer Cordiero here? Yes, yes, you may have the floor now.
Ah, good morning sa tanan mga konsihal, o sa mga honorable. Na daghan kayong salamat nga, gi na, na isami sa na tagaan og time. Gi paabot na na mo ng complaint sa kay, na Attorney Cho, sa una. So, wala na tagaan og pansin kaayo, so, amo aseng gi pa barangay, dilim man mi atubangon sa barangay, kay ang barangay Captain is, ah, ng ayahang reason, nabayaran na sa dina. So, wala mi mapugos, dilim mi maka kuwan maka pugos ayaha. So, na nga ni atumidiri sa piso, ah, gi pa blacklist na mo kay ginagamit niya ang Epe Heights Indigent Homeowners Association. Tapos, iyang ta, ilahing tao ang parinyohon niya. Unya, wala siya'y ngalan jud nga siya isak ka officer. So, ang ginahimo pod niya, ah, maghimo na siya og solicitation. Ang President sa maong Association, mooy papirmaho niya, pagkulikta sa maong hinabang, siya na og iyang asawa, so wala na siya'y report sa body, o sa member nga mga pubre kaying tao dia sa, sa ni sa Epe Heights. Monay amo ang gi paabot diri nga, base og, mga ayaw napuna siya, tapos gamitin niya ang Epe Heights Homeowners Association, para maaware mo sa ayaha. Kay dilim man mi gusto nga, mga ayaw mi kuarta, kami nga mga officer dilim mi mga ayaw kuarta sa every, ah, officer di re sa mong lungsod sa Epe. Ang amua, mga, maghimo lang ni resolution, nga project para diha sa mga pubre kaying tao kay, kanang lugaraha, nit-nit kay na diha, tapos daghan kay ma balay, wala'y mga kurinti. So, ang mga tao diha, ga hangyo sa moa nga, na ngayo sila tabang, nga matabangan sila kay mo sa, sa akong na kuwan, ang ilahang trabaho diha is driver, tricycle driver, tapos, ah, kaning balot bindor. Muna mapubrik jud kayo, kaning ilahang bubong silang balay diha, og imuha ginang, kanang, ano ulang si mong kamot, malili na ni nyusila. Muna nga naluo'y ko sa ilaha ka minimum, nangita mi pa maaging nga matabangan sila, mapansin sila dia sa, sa atbang sa DILG. Kay kanang problema ha, ginagamit niya as a personal sa ayahang kaugalingon. Wala na niya ginareport sa member, o wala pod na niya ginareport, ang kanang kwarta nga makuha niya, gikan sa solici- solicitation. So, diha mi na ka problema. Kus, kusunon na mo na siya, masuku dahin na siya, dilis siya gusto nga kusunon. Ang kanang about sa money, about sa project, dilipun na siya muhatag, undili ang mga tao diha nga pubrik ayaw, nga wala'y mga trabaho, maupay kulikahan niya monthly, attorney's pay two thousand pesos, unya, four hundred ka bubong na siya, it times na siya sa two thousand, almost five hundred thousand ang, ang ayahang makulikta. So, kanang mga tao diha, luo'y kay, muna nga ingon ko, ah, ipaabot na tunis sa taas para makabalusila, kunun sa ang iyahang background. Monay iyang ginahimo diri, kay daghan politiko nga ayahang ginagamit, karon, muna nga ni dako ayahang ulo. Dilis siya gusto nga mabauan, o mabauan ayahang, ayahang kaning sekretong nga ginahimo. So, daghan kayong salamat sa mga officer, karon, puntaga.
So, what's the pleasure of the body? Sir, thank you sa information.
Honorable Chair?
Yes?
Mr. Flor? I move that the matters being aired by Epe Heights Indigent Association be referred to social services.
Before we refer this matter to social services, I would like to thank sa information sa iyang hatag, this matter will be referred in social services. Next visitor, Mr. Flor?
We have visitor here from the IPMR Honorable Chair, a tree here, supposedly visitor, but, but I think it's already, it is already in the order of business, so we tackle this visitor in the order.
So, so for the three visitors remaining, I think we'll, we'll entertain them in order of business. Next visitor, Mr. Flor, um, no visitors?
Back to the Honorable Chair. No more visitor.
For the privilege, our Mr. Flor?
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Mr. Flor?
Proceed, I move. No. There's some privileges our Honorable Chair. Anybody from this Honorable Chamber who wishes to avail of their privilege? Please raise your hand. Or shall we begin from Honorable Ramos, any privilege? Honorable Noga, privilege? Honorable Wal, any privilege? Current privilege our?
Yes. Honorable Wal, your acknowledge.
You have the floor.
You may have the floor now.
Ah, again, good morning sa tong preceding, Chair, sabi on, ini sa, poleda, sa mga kauban, ah, Sangguyang Bayan. Sa atong besita, si Ma'Ma Rita Miniao, and then si Ma'Ma, atong ni Maribel Tamayo, and then si Ma'Ma Upay. Also, our, ah, new, ah, Chairman sa Supreme Counsel, Retired General Dakota, og si Mabol Anginterin. So, again, may puntag, ah, unang na, nalipay ko nga, na tong NCIP, pramaklaro kining mga, atong concern, issue about sa, kining atong balahod, labi na sa national guideline and local guideline. Probably, ah, ang ITD sa Epe, ah, during my time, nanatay mga barangay item are almost twenty-three. So, na undang lang nitungod sa nanatay bagong, alay di panaugni, Sir Alan Kapoyan, about sa suspension conduct obseleksyon in all label, sa mid-twelve twenty-twenty-one, nga it jili suspended, na siya memorandum order, so ni undang ni. So, ending charon, murad, na conclus me, nga provided sa circular memorandum, tripait to nga suspension conduct obseleksyon in all label, so gi na, ni ginabuhat pod karon. Ang pinood, ang Epe, nanatay bagong giselek, duha ka, duha sa barangay, and then sa municipal. So, provided sa, ah, circular memorandum, ang Sangguyang Bayan, gahulat jud ni og, kanang, Pam, Sir Alan Kapoyan, nga ang atong circular memorandum is already lefted. So, kung lefted, pwita, pwede na ni, magpadayon po ko during my time, to finish my work, labi na sa twenty-eight barangay. So, poli karon, na si Ma'Ma Maribel, si Ma'Ma Upay, and then si Ma'Ma Rita Miniao, maklaruan na to, malambagan na to, ang atong mga IP di sa lungsod sa Epe, kay mawad an ni og direksyon, ang pinood lang, wala na directiba, kay magkadayan din version. So, ang, ang among Supreme Counsel of Elders, nga hidden, ni matora diha habib blame. So, maugyapon, nalibog yapon, kinsa ba ang iron? Ang atong IP, ang atong, ah, NCIP persona, or kinsa ang luguon. Kay kung amuntan on, ang atong Counsel of Elders, wala na siya, kan, wala na siya power. Wala na siya power pag, pagpili, pagbutang sa ilang mga leader dia sa barangay. So, katulam, ah, murad sitimen, pero, ang aqua moron, iclarify na na to, malipay ni na si Ma'Ma Tamayo, ang atong legal counsel, kung asa ba ni, asa ni mo koyo, sa among directiba. Kay basi, magkabulian ang Epe, kay kung atong inungdoman, since the beginning, ang Epe is problema, problematic. Time di man minyo sa una problema. Pag after ano problema, anto, panto province, municipal, dan to barangay is always, ang IP always problem. Wala daw 'yung mga klaro nga, haong nga pag bumala kung bilik, puro lang problema ang malawat. Katulang, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Wal, um, next, Mr. Flor?
Still on privilege our, Honorable Garcia, any privilege?
Yes, ah, good morning to each and everyone. Ah, I just want to inform everyone, ah, gehapon is our, ah, Seal of Good Local Governance Evaluation, and I'm happy to inform that out of ten nga, to evaluate from the, our local government unit of Epe, we passed the seven out of ten, so hopefully before magfinal ang atong regional assessment, mapatsaran di na to na, makuha pa na to ang tulo, and hopefully this time, mapasaran na di na to ang LGU for the SGLG. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Catalunya, your privilege, Honorable Tangpalan?
Yes, I have. Ah, good morning to each and everyone for presiding officer, to all my colleagues, and to all the visitors. Ah, salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakat. I have a copy given by our very own Municipal Social Welfare Development Officer, si Ma'am Jude Linsepe. This is as to regards to the Joint Memorandum Circular Number, ah, with the subject joining all provinces, cities, and municipalities to use the Social Protection Handbook for local planning, budgeting, implementing, monitoring, and evaluating social protection programs. So, the DILG enjoins all LGUs to prepare the SPDR, Social Protection, um, Social Protection, ah, Development Report as a tool for planning and budgeting, and the Social Protection Plan and Initiative. So, using this tool, the SPDR, a resolution must be passed for its adoption. This is a mandate of the DILG, since we are also, ah, vying for the SGLG nga, usaman daw ni siya, matut pa ni Ma'am Sepe, no? Preparation for this, um, SPDR is every three years, and the updating is every year. So, the LGU shall submit the SPDR to the province for considulate, conceali- consolidation during, ah, every second quarter of a year. The SPDR aims to provide a comprehensive source of information on social protection policies, programs, and statistics that will provide the municipal overview of the current situation of the LGU along social protection. So, the report includes general information of the LGU, the LGU risk and vulnera- vulnerability assessment, the inventory of adaptation strategies, as well as gaps, issues on its implementation. So, the SPDR will serve as a tool in planning and the budgeting policy formulation program development that will be an input in the preparation of social protection plans and initiatives. Honorable Chair, ah, I will, ah, memo for this, ah, SPDR report will be tackled on the other matters since, ah, the Municipal Social Welfare Development Officer has lobbied for the resolution to be passed as mandate by the DILG. That is all, Honorable Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Trida. Next will avail privilege our, Mr. Flor?
Um, Honorable Turalba, any privilege?
No privilege speech at this moment, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Flor?
We are true with the privilege our Honorable Chair, except the Honorable Chair's-
Yes, um, just want to greet, um, happy, advance happy birthday to Honorable Garcia, and more blessings, more birthdays to come. Thank you, Mr. Flor?
We are true with the privilege our Honorable Chair. So, with this, I move for, I move to dispense the reading of the previous minutes of our session.
There's a motion pass by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Garcia, any discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved.
Honorable Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
There's a motion pass by Honorable Chong, any second? Seconded by Honorable Wal, any discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved. For the-
Back to Secretary?
For the first order of business, Madam Secretary?
Supplemental Budget Number One for CY twenty-three of barangay Tenan and Labi.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Appropriation?
This matter will be referred in Committee on Appropriation.
Item E-two, annual budget CY twenty-three of barangay Donhyo, Sefa, and Kanyu.
So, what's the pleasure of the body?
Honorable Chair, I move that this same be referred to the Committee on Appropriation?
Refer to Committee on Appropriation.
Next is E-three, Julie Endors from the Council of Elders, the following Resolution Number Three and Five, Series of Twenty Twenty-Three, a resolution- a resolution approving the holdover capacity of Panglima Rashid M. Bual as the indigenous people mandatory representative of the indigenous people, cultural communities in the Sanggoyang Bayan of Ipin until the selection and official assumption of the office of his successor. And Resolution Number Two, Five, a resolution strongly endorsing the official representation of Rashid M. Bual as the municipal IPMR of Ipin Samwangasibugay for the second term.
So what's the pleasure of the body? Resis for three minutes.
Ah, resis.
Mega. And I would like, I would like to suspend the rules to accommodate our visitors for today, um, NCIP. Ma, um, um, from the resident representative sa NCIP, you may have the floor now.
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Mr. Flor.
I remember the suspension of the rule.
Two suspended.
Good morning.
Ma, atong paano ng elders?
Ah, elders? Ah, pwede.
Honorable Chair, I think we should first hear from the Council of Elders of Ipin to explain regarding the Resolution Number Three and Five.
Okay. Any representative from Council of Elders?
Before we hear, did they comment from the Regional Director?
Barley. First and foremost, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for allowing us this morning to affair report this August body to say something about the appointment of Hapid Muhammad as IPMR by Sir Honorable Rashid Bual. For the information of the body, August body, Hapid Muhammad was a former member of the Council of Elders in Ipin. But a year ago, a resolution was passed and approved by the Council of Elders terminating the membership of Hapid from the Council of Elders. Terminating not only his membership but also his designation as Panglima of the place where he resides. In that resolution, it was categorically stated that he was divest not only of his membership but also his authority to mediate, arbitrate, settle any dispute that may be brought to his attention. So coupled with that termination, coupled with that removal of his responsibilities is also his authority to represent the people or the indigenous people within Ipin or within his community. He is no longer authorized in that resolution to represent anybody who are members of the indigenous people. We are wondering why the NCIP still allow the selection. In fact, there is no, there was no selection done in this, in his appointment. It was only a meeting called then. The NCIP Province declared that he was the official nominee for the IPMR of representing the indigenous people in the legislative body in the municipality of Ipin. There was no selection at all. So we are in, we are wondering, despite the fact that the NCIP received copies of that resolution, the Regional Office received that resolution and the National Office, but still the provincial officer, now the acting Regional Director, allowed the selection or allowed the participation of Hapid Muhammad to represent as IPMR by Sir Honorable Rashid Bual. The NCIP, uh, the first thing that they should do after receiving a resolution, if there was no any bias on their side, they should have studied and consulted the Council of Elders. If as to the status of Hapid, membership of the, of Hapid as a member of the indigenous people still intact. Kasi ano yun eh, kalapatan niya yun bilang isang IP member. But he was only divest of any authority to represent the indigenous people, particularly Samal or whatever as long as member of the IPs. In igiawa atong kuansaya ha. So the Regional Office, Provincial Office, National Office, we have furnished copies of that resolution. But despite that fact, still provincial office, the Regional Office conducted the alleged selection that ultimately nominated Hapid. So our purpose of coming here today first is to let this August body know that Hapid Muhammad is no longer a member of the Council of Elders and that he is no longer authorized to represent the indigenous people of Ipin, specifically the Samal tribe. So according to the NCIP, when we, uh, tried to, to be enlightened, why is it that despite the resolution, they still continued with the selection of Hapid? They were, we were told specifically by Mr. Sagadsad, dudong Sagadsad, that accordingly, the students at the Islamic Cibugay Supreme Council has no jurisdiction over the Council of Elders, that it is a distinct and separate entity that has no jurisdiction over the selection of IPs. So I'd like to enlighten the NCIP. We have to admit, we have to admit the fact that members of the IPs who are in the top echelon are not Muslims. They are not Tausug, they are not Samal, they are not Kalibogan. So for the information of this body, if I may, your honors, I'd like to enlighten the NCIP today that as a Muslim, we are ruled by a monarchical rule. Monarchy rule. So we are following the Sultanate form of government and Sultanate law. So in our community, the Sultan will appoint his deputies, Panglimas, whatever. And the appointing authority is the Sultan. So out those Panglimas are automatically, automatically in this era of us are council. Out of this council or elders will rise out the Council of Elders. So the allegation of Sagadsad that the Supreme Council is different, distinct, and separate from the Council of Elders is not. Panglimas appointed are automatically members of the council. And out, out of this council will emerge the Supreme Council of Elders. What is the meaning of that? Aside from the Council of Elders, another Supreme Council appeared. What is the meaning of that? So that in case disputes under the jurisdiction of Panglimas who are Council of Elders cannot be resolved by themselves, it will automatically goes up to the Supreme Council of Elders. So you cannot say that the Supreme Council is different, distinct from the Council of Elders. Ganun yan. So mali ang sinasabi ninyo na ibang Supreme Council. So who is the appointing, appointing authority insofar as the appointment of, uh, Hapid Muhammad is concerned, our Matwaraja Habib Lean. He is the appointing authority. Because you know, the Supreme Council is an inclusive entity, organization, not specifically referred to one tribe, it is inclusive. Because our traditions, customs is different from others. For example, in this community, we select our patriarch. So all of these people, all of these people residing in that area should affiliate giants to our patriarch, whether you are Samal, Kalibogan, or whatever. Then our patriarch, what we call the Matwaraja, will appoint his deputies and that those are the Panglimas, the Maharajas. Yon, tumanggong, ulangkaya. But we are governed by that rule, the Sultanate, uh, kind of rule. So Hapid has been terminated. His appointment as Panglima has been terminated. So with that termination, his authority, any representation representing indigenous people is also removed. So he has no authority now, he has no legal standing, legal personality to represent the indigenous people in the legislative body of Ipin under the guise of being an IP member. So we would just like to inform this honorable body not to allow Hapid to sit as IPMR of Ipin to avoid any similar situation like as the selection of the IPMR for the provincial legislative body. We would like to avoid that kind of situation wherein until now, the case still pending in the court. So we'd like to inform this honourable body until such time that the resolution passed by our council will be resolved. If cannot be resolved by the Regional Office, it should be resolved by the National Office. Until such time, until then, then if the National Office will still allow Hapid Muhammad to represent the IPs in the legislative body, then we will submit. But until the resolution will not be resolved, we pray that this honorable August body will not allow Hapid to sit as IPMR and represent the indigenous people of Ipin. So, uh, again, I'd like to reiterate our heartfelt gratitude that we are allowed to affair report this morning and to express our position to selection of Hapid Muhammad as IPMR of Ipin. That's all, your honors.
Thank you, sir. Again, representative sa NCIP ma, can you enlighten us about this matter?
Uh, good morning again to this honorable body, Mr. Chairman, good morning po. Before I proceed, sir, I may be allowed that our, on the legal issue, that attorney Idyang be recognized also by this body, sir?
Yes, attorney.
Okay.
Attorney...
Maribel Idyang.
Idyang, um...
Idyang po.
Igbyang?
Idyang.
Igbyang?
Yes, po.
You may have the first.
She will be talking on the legal issues issued by our chairperson, Chairperson Kapuyan on memorandum order number 352. So... So uh I would like to express on the legal issue, then on the issue on the customary laws, because they are invoking their customary laws. I think our Sama Council of Elders is here, you are to defend the allegations that uh uh Haji APID is no longer, has no personality as far as his Panglima is concerned. So that is now the concern of the Council of Elders, they are to depend on that. And in the NCIP, we are here to shed issues on the issue ones issued by our chairperson and the process on the IPMR selection and the issuance of the uh COA by yours truly po. So uh Attorney Idiang, sir, ma, please. Thank you po.
Attorney, may I have the first?
Uh good morning, your honors. Um first, I just want to clarify as to the first issue raised by um Honorable Bual as to the suspension of the IPMR um selection process. So for the clarification, uh Central Office or our um NCIP Chairperson issued a memorandum order 352. Uh the subject was um suspension of the conduct of IPMR selection process in all levels, in which um the understanding of the community that the selax, uh the suspension is absolute. But obviously, I don't know why the community was confused since if I may be allowed to read um paragraph three of the memorandum order, number three, which states that in view herof, the conduct of IPMR selection process in all levels are hereby suspended effective immediately, except in communities where IPMRs have performed their duties in accordance with section seven of um the 2021 National IPMR Guidelines. In case where IPMR selection is allowed to proceed, a community resolution affirming the conduct of the selection process shall be submitted. The community resolution signed by the IPS or majority of the validated decision makers identified in accordance with customary law shall contain the following: names of nominees, names of selectors, and a copy of the local guidelines to form part of the community resolution. Which means that the suspension of the selection process is not really absolute. There is an exception. And um the process actually for, for the conduct of the selection process is um the Central Office will approve any request from the community for a conduct of the selection process. That is why um since the term of Honorable Bual will be expired by, I think, July, July 2023, and since the local guidelines of the community states that um within six months from the expire, uh within six months before the expiration of the term of the incumbent IPMR, the selection process for the successor shall be connected. So that is why um the selection process of the soon-to-be successor of um Honorable Bual has already been selected. Thank you.
Yes, Honorable Bual, you're recognized.
Uh, yun lang, ma'am.
Yes.
Good morning. So uh, kule, nalipay ko, ma'am, kay sa imong pagpasabot, klaro siya. So nalangko gamay, kuwan ba, nalangko gamay uh pangutan na during sa selection. Uh we are.
Um excuse me, from the staff, please help, Honorable Bual.
Hello, hello. Naga-gamit ba ta sa national guideline na to kay ang national guideline, ma'am, na to. Uh according to ma'am Opay, sa nagkan-nakapadans is instead of one term, two consecutive term. Muna'y, muna'y bago. So balay klaro namo, karoon man kay ang sa imo uh merakaroban, kay ma'am Opay, nakaroon namo sa province is instead of one term, the new look, new national guideline na to is uh two consecutive term, not, not two term, but two consecutive term, not interbar. So secondly, uh are you believe the customary law or not? Kana lang. Kay obdili, ma'am, wala may mo. Kay according to our speaker, uh Haji APID is what, it was already terminated. So sa qualification, Nasa section 22, qualified and disqualified, he is already uh disqualified, he is violating the customary law. So muna'y na-kumpis ni ma'am. Muna, kung ato, sigumin pa ngayon ang tinutun, ma'am. Nangayon ni ob, national and local guidelines sa opisina, anten na wala, nagrequisme. Muna karoon, nalipay ko na ka kay mukawas tiyun niya ang the realidad, realistic. So nangayon ni ma'am, daghan, daghan, ma'am. Daghan ni gipasa sa, sa kuwan, sa HAP opis na po dery. Wala diw akser, ma'am. Nasilang wahid, nasilang sir Sagat Sad. Wala. Muna'y karoon nalipay ni, ikaw ang legal counselor, you are the balan, balancer. Magtimbang. So katulang, ma'am.
May I be clarified of the first, uh first um question? Is it, ano, is, is it about the term?
Granted, granted po.
Term, term.
At, si ma'am, si ma'am Opay sa province is, inong tanan? Ang bagong guideline na to, kung sa unat three term, gameo one term. And then right now, inong niya, two consecutive term. Muna amoklaro, ma'am, kay el pa, ang uban, muna'y karoon, ma'am, kareng term rotation, ma'am, deryo minabuang. The rest is three consecutive term. Dumandan, nasi, edin doy, si, si la musa, si ipan, nasipan, si ah si asumputan, salug, salugan, pikim, cukutin term, sasikantin, nansukliba. Na ang kaparan, nasi, masmar, nasi, tugot, napasimardya. Ano ang uban, kay na't biyan, two consecutive term. Muna, ma'am, anten nandyan, klaro mo, kay mabuang ang IP dery. Mabuang. Kay rest, three consecutive term, two term. And then ang uban, di pagani, tagaan ng holdover sa NCIP personan. So kana lang, ma'am, ako dun niya, ipabot kay mo kay you are the legal counsel of NCIP. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, your honor. Um for the term, obviously, for the 2009 guidelines of IPMR um selection process, three terms dudto siya.
Oo.
Um I don't know, ano, naconfused pa ka, since during your time, the 2018 guidelines atong gigamit, gi-revise siya, gi-amend siya into two terms na lang, diba, two terms? And then uh during sa 2021 guidelines, you said na po siya, gi-balik into three terms. So for now, three terms as siya, kung naselect ka using the 2021 guidelines. But during 2018 guidelines, two terms lang siya. But I don't know, ang say naconfusa ninyo about the term of office. Kasi ang term of office na three consecutive term or two consecutive term, applicable lang siya, kung ang isa ka community, wala'y laing IP. Like, for example, only one tribe exist. Sa inyo ang sa Epeel, you have five, five, four. In which, klaro sad kayo sa guidelines, you were informed about it. Diba, ang unang term is subanan? Because you have your term rotation agreement signed by you. Klaro man siguro to, basta daghang tribu sa isa ka, community, ay isa ka, for example, this municipality dapat mag-agree mo as to sa term rotation. You agreed, duha, duha ba ka term? Ah duha ka term ba 'yung ilaha? You isla?
Karoon, duha, ma'am.
Duha, duha, isa. Kasi ito stated in your, ano, local guidelines, you agreed. So since nahumana ang term sa sama, ah sama ba? Wahid, please, I am not really, ano. Sama tribe ang sakaroon kay Honorable Bual. Kulibogan si Timoy, ah si ano, dayon sama tribe karoon. So the first term was served by the subanan. Since naamoy term rotation agreement, isa ka term sa subanan. And then sunod, pag mahuman ang term sa subanan, term nasad sa kulibogan. Since nahumana man ang term sa kulibogan, dapat term na siya sa sama, sumauna karoon. Isa-isa ramantaka term, muma inyong nagrehan. Since nahumana ang term sa kulibogan, sa sama nasad. And then klaro sad kayo sa inyong guidelines. Inguna ni siya, pag term sa sama, ang mo decide kin sang ilang representative, ang sama council. Sa kulibogan, diba? Sa kulibogan, pag, pagpili ninyo kin sang inyuhang representative, inyuharamansang council ang nagdecide. So now, na ay, na ay issue as to disqualification of Haji APID, in which naamoy local guidelines, gi-himo mismo, diba, Honorable IPMR. Kamu mismo ang nagdraft an eh. Kung sa inyong gi-ingon, naamoy guidelines, naamoy qualification, disqualification. Yes. Gibutang dery, daghan kali kayo sa qualification and then disqualification, so delete na lang nakubasahon. So now, since the Council of Elders of that particular tribe, ang na ay katungod gamupili kin sang ilang representative, dapat gitanau nila daan kung qualified o disqualified ni. And since si Haji APID ang gi-pili, ipig sabihin, wala'y disqualification, wala'y, wala'y issue as to that disqualification, kasi wala man say naabotid to. Kin sa ang na ay katungod, gamu raise sa issue as to disqualification, it should be the community, the sama, sama, sama community, not the other tribe. Kasi mumi naabutang sa inyong local guidelines.
Uh, kule, nalangko eh gamay, ma'am, palalong dalumana, turni.
Uh, aktule, ang, ang nagfirma sa terminiting, ma'am. Gi-cancelan community, uh barangay bankiruan. Si uh, junay de, uh kuwan, si Abdul Ali Colong sama na, then si Bill, si Ahshri Muhammad, sama siya from bankiruan. Si Abdur, Abdurrahim Abdau, yakan, from bankiruan. Si Masuhod, Hasin, Ha, Hasin, from bankiruan. Si Matuwaraja from bankiruan, and then si Salatun, Wajra from bankiruan. So read in there, community, a community is not, kana isakap balay lang, kumbili. Or community is a, is a barangay, barangay or kana siyo. Sumanam, ma'am, kay batuan akong pangutan na, he served Bepal tribe. Upat ka tribu kulibogan, sama, yakan, and subanan. Uh if he is qualified in sama, he is disqualified, disqualified. Ang yang panam sa customary law is disqualified from three tribe. Muna ang, ang sa customary, matagipangutanin ako, naabay granted ba ang the customary or not? If not, so we cannot complain. But if granted, so we will continue our complaint, not only, dylan dery. Pedy matumig, kuwan, mangitatning lain ang insiya. So katulang, ma'am, thank you.
Um thank you, thank you for the clarification. Obviously, klaro man kayo, every, every time that I have an IAC in your community, ako yung iemphasize on section 65, diba, sa IPR, Prima Cil customary law. Even sa tuang um IPMR selection process, and there is conflict, unsa ang gi-ingon, dapat i-refer mo na or i-setel mo na using the customary law, obviously. And then um, nakabaluman sad siguro ka being an IPMR, no, selected IPMR, na question as to disqualification, um any protest regarding selection process, it should be discussed or it should be um filed in the NCIP, not in the local government unit. So I just want to say thank you to the, the local government unit to the officials here for giving us time to settle this issue. But klaro man, good kayo, diba, um naamasa sa tong guidelines, kung inyuhang basahon, kung naamoy question sa qualification, kung naamoy propista, tanau ninyo disqualified siya, it should be filed in the NCIP, it should be resolved in the NCIP, not in the LGU. So your petition, your protest should be filed in the NCIP and the NCIP will resolve that.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Mr. Faval.
You are adult. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh to Attorney Tamayo, we.
Idiang, sir, please, Idiang.
Ah Idiang, ah Idiang. We understand the rules on protest, selection protest specifically. But we had done that kind of uh rules uh in the case of uh Honorable Laop and the petitioners, Matuwaraja, uh Habib Lean, Hasim, Panglima Jana, uh during the review of selection of IPMR, IPMR in the province of Sambongasibugay. But unfortunately, we did all we can do in the provincial level, but uh uh we were not entertained properly. And we have, uh, there is an uh 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 clear bias on the part, on the side of the provincial officials. When we asked for the guidelines, they denied us. When we asked for the uh documents submitted to the screening committee, we, we were denied. Instead, we were told to ask from the screening committee who conducted the screening processes. So the screening committee told us that all the documents submitted by the, by the, by the uh individual aspirants were already submitted to the office of the provincial officer. And yet, when we asked for the such, as such documents from the office of the provincial officer, we were denied. And then we were told to uh ask formally through request letter, which we did. Yet still, we are denied such documents. So uh we exhausted all possible legal remedies before uh applying property area relief in court. So we have already experienced, ma'am. That is why uh few months ago, there was a task group from the National Commission, personally from the office of Commissioner Alan Kapuyan, who were able to talk with this task group. They were conducting investigation on alleged frauds and corruptions happening in Sambongasibugay. And we were able to talk with those task group. And we told them what was happening, the real situation in the ground. Actually, we have submitted some of the papers uh. Actually, we have submitted some of the papers pertaining to said case. And it was submitted to the Office of the Commissioner. So going back ma'am, as they asked to ask what you have said, that the rightful person to decide whether such a person is qualified or not qualified are members of the same tribe. Like for instance, in the case of Hapid Muhammad, his tribe is sama. And according to the rightful people to decide whether he is qualified or not are the sama. That is why in my uh speech before uh earlier, I have told you that our organization is an inclusive one. It includes sama, Kulibogan, Yakkan, and all tribes that consider themselves as Muslim. Because it is our traditions that in one community, we have to select one patriarch. So assuming granting for the sake of uh argumentation. Sama, Hapid is representing sama. May we know how many sama are in IPIL? May we know?
Um can I?
Council of elders, what is the classification to become as council of elders? How can you consider a group such as council of elders? How would you define such numbers of council of elders?
I am not the right person to answer that.
That is why.
That question because um we have our process in NCIP. So to determine who are who are the member of the council of leaders of that particular tribe, um there is there was a group or there was a team created to validate it in the community. So there was a validation process. So the validation team um visited to the community, the sama community, and asked the community who are your leaders and elders. That is our process.
Under the rules ma'am, under the guidelines, national guidelines, the group that is qualified to proclaim.
What pati kunapovision in the national guidelines sir? Can you please uh specify?
The IPS, any IPS should have their own IPS, the indigenous political structure.
Yes sir, exactly.
And this IPS will be the one to declare the proclaimed winner in case of selection.
Yes sir.
Uh may I know from the sama tribe, Hapid Muhammad, if they have an IPS? Composition of IPS? May I know? If they have the composition of IPS?
What do you mean composition of IPS? Composition of um leaders, council of leaders, or the the members, the population?
Because as IPS, as you agreed, will be the one to proclaim the.
The IPS sir, the IPS sir, the council of elders, yes.
And he will be the one to.
So who are the ano, who are the council of elders of the sama tribe?
Let me know.
What pati kunapovision in the local guidelines?
There should be a chairman, vice-chairman, and the others that will compose the organizational.
Um sir, we have here um validated um council of elders of the five tribe. So we have here the Subanan Council of Elders, it was validated by the NCIP. The Kulibogan Council of Elders, we have here also. And um the sama council of elders, also the Yakkan. So the sama council of elders as validated by NCIP since kadugay na ni diba? Oo. Since unsa panga year, number one is Panglima Alpa Alhapid Muhammad. And we have also here Panglima Alsri Muhammad. Um Panglima Merham Untung.
Yeah.
Panglima Tatung Muhammad and Panglima Muksin Kasih. Five uh member of the council of leaders of the sama tribe.
So for the information of this body and you ma'am, one of the signatory in determination of Hapid is uh Alsri is one. And as I have said, uh the Supreme Council is an inclusive entity. It includes sama. The appointment of Hapid as Panglima emanate from the council of Supreme Council of Elders.
Sir, as to your as to your ano, as to your declaration of the Supreme Council, we have yet to ano to validate it. Um is this with is that Supreme Council of Elders um related to or recognized per the council of elders' decision-making process as indigenous peoples? We have yet to identify or to determine that sir because um we are not familiar with your um customeri law. But if you are um if what you are trying to emphasize is Hapid will be considered as disqualified because of your declaration that he is no longer apanglima, sir, may proseso po tayo to determine that and we should respect our rules.
Yes, yes ma'am, we agree to that.
And then um so far, we we did not receive any resolution or what from the regional office. Since ganito sir, um pag protest involving municipal IPMR, the protest should be addressed to or filed to the regional office, not the provincial office. And we did not receive that.
We agreed mama, as to the resolution, we have submitted resolution, capitanis the province, the region, and the national office. So I don't know, it the resolution should have been acted upon. But to our dismay, it was it the the NCIP office did not mind.
Uh do you have a copy for your uh copy of your ano received copy from the regional office sir?
Yes.
But since it is already um raised now and um the certificate of affirmation has already been issued by our regional director. So we should have, we should respect of course the issuance of the certificate of affirmation to.
No, no ma'am, that is why, that is why there was a case filed against the provincial officer, against Maminyao. Because there is a blatant uh blatant uh bias on on her side, on her side. That is why we we told the task group, we are asked if uh we want another people uh to be assigned as provincial officer. We told the task group that we will never recommend any person to be assigned as provincial officer of the province.
It is already a different issue sir and.
No, no, not a different issue because you said that we have to respect.
We have our process sir, I I I said that we have our process in resolving protest. Yes, we have our process in resolving protest.
The problem, it would not reach this far if the provincial officer acted upon our resolution.
What date sir, yung submission, I filed yung resolution?
This has been long submitted to the province, to the office of the provincial office. This will not reach this far if the provincial office acted upon the resolution. They would, they should have clarified us.
May I have the copy sir please? Um Amamalita Minya will ano will answer that.
Yes, Amamalita, you may have the phone now.
Sa mga panglima sa ta sa sama, ginakwestion ang inyuhang authority. Please, isturiapun mo. Kay we cannot defend ang in the case sa inyuha, kasi delete mi mga sama. No, we are NCIP, so depend that. Kasi they want to disqualify ang inyong IPMR, selected IPMR. So again, ang decision ninyo is at stake. Uh in the case of siguro, I would like to uh make it clear. The process in the selection. Kasi the provincial office is tasked to process the selection, the selection, the process on the selection. We did not select, when we did not receive any approval by the chairperson. The selection of the IPMR was duly uh there was a signed resolution from the community specifically from the sama that they have requested the chairperson to conduct the selection. Of which, that's that's uh that request was granted by them. Kaya nga, there was a selection last March twenty uh March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And this was also attended by our honorable mayor Oligario. Isa yan, then. And aside from that, should there have been any protest siguro from the sama tribe disqualifying for the disqualification of Alhapid uh Muhammad, siguro my office will not issue certificate of affirmation. But since the selection process, all the documents was forwarded to my office and it was reviewed by our regional review team. That is why the COA was issued in favor of Timoy uh Alhapid. Ganito rin, I would like to make it clear that the term rotation, sa twenty nineteen, ang word and not term agreement. The term agreement, ang unang naglingkod is Subanan in the person of Timoy Perfecto Ginusaw. Sa second term is Kulibogan in the person of Sahisa Uto. On the third term, naglingkod napod ang Subanan in the person of Honorable Rolando Gasal. On the fourth term, naglingkod napod ang Kulibogan in the in the person of uh Rashid Wal. On the two terms ang Subanan, two terms ang Kulibogan. So now this is the term for the sama. And it is clearly stated sa ilahang guidelines, kung kinsa, kung kinsa ang turno karoon, ang magpili samaong magpalinkod sa ilahang tigpama ba, diha sa hawanan sa konseho, is the term uh term for the concern na tribu ang maoimupili. Kitang nga mga other tribes will only witness, respetuhon ato ang matagusa sa pagpili sa ilaha. In the same manner, ang pagpili sa una ni panglima Rashid Wal, girispetuhan po na sa obang tribu. Girispetuhan sa Subanan, girispetuhan sa Yakkan, girispetuhan sa sama. So karoon, kung turno na karoon sa sama, nga wala pagyod po sila nakalingkod. So we should also respect that term sa ilaha. Sakto tungso te ni Attorney Bell, if there should ever protest, then file it. Kami, because when that process naabot na na sa among office ang mga documents, we did not receive any protest from the from any tribes. Neither gikan sa Subanan, sa sama, sa Yakkan, or sa uh Kulibogan. Sa ato pa, with our own understanding, wala problema. That is why the certificate of affirmation was issued. In fact, kung tanau nimo six months galihok. But there was no uh letter complaint that reached my office, okay. On the resolution, in the provision, sa mga documents nga ihatag sela, NCIP, let it be clear, that NCIP is just, we are just there to facilitate, assist, document, certify, validate, and issue the COA. Ang screening committee was, there was a screening committee created and authorized by the council of the of the sama, nga sila ang magcompose sa screening committee. It is not NCIP. So any documents for that matters is na as a screening committee. It is not within sama as a NCIP. So but then, uh when that was issued, that was the 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 community requested for the for the local guidelines and the uh result of the screening committee. I was already at the regional level. So according to my staff sa ground, it is naapa sa ilahang council of elders, all the documents that being asked, the local guidelines and the result of the screening committee. Siguro, amurag na kuwan ni mister ni sir, ang kabahin issue sa provincial board, ugdiri sa IPIL. So sa provincial board, uh ato na ng ikwambikot is is already na na sa korte. So din na na dapat naisgutan. So but then, again, kung na ay may kuwan, it is, let's dilinyet ang unsa trabaho sa NCIP, the community, the DILG and the DL, the uh LGU, and most of all, the community itself. So siguro, ing ato lang ang amo abat. Tanan, all the process had been complied. It was in accordance to the twenty twenty-one national guidelines. Ang pagproseso sa sa turno sa sama ay CCIPS.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh maybe.
May I have the floor?
May I have the floor now?
Salamat ka Imam sa inyong presensya karoon, thank you very much for your presence today. For responding to our request to be present in this uh Sangguniang Bayan to shed light on matters relative to the IPMR of this municipality. Uh kaning, ang imo naisgutan kanina nga rotation na ma'am no? Ang ilahang kuwan kay ah kami sa Sangguniang Bayan, dilik kami well verse kabahin ana no? Uh it's your duty nga sa NCIP, nga mo appoint din ni sa representante sa hawanan sa konseho. Uh una uh una naglingkod si Sir Perfecto Ginusaw.
Yes ma'am.
Then napulihan ni Sir Sap Sap.
Yeah, Hassa Lisa Uto.
Uh late Sahisa Uto Sap Sap, manggutu 'yang angga ma'am, diri sa muha. Then gipuliha ni late Rolando Gasal, Gasal. Then karoon na as Sir, uh as Sir Rashid Wal. So katungang mga katung pag formulate ato nga panahon na ma'am, wala complaint against those people.
Of course ma'am.
Wala no?
Wala ma'am, there was no.
Given nga kanikaroon, nga naaman sila complaint no against kay Haji Hapid. Uh unsa take, ano is a NCIP ma'am? Uh magpadayon siya sa iyahang, sa iyahang puhon nga uh sa iyahang paglingkod ri sa hawanan uh sa konseho through sa kowang imong nahatag na na napirmahan by eighth of July, mo ang term ni Sir Bual. Or kaning uh hatagan ba ninyo o kaning kabukatun ang ang complaint nga gato dito sa inyuhang opisina ugnaaman?
Uh first of all, thank you for that ano uh question, okay. Uh since our office had already issued the certificate of affirmation ma'am, sa ato pa, wala'y naabot nga complaint sa among office in relation to the selection of Haji Alhapid. So wala na siya ma'am, so kami manggod, once naalagan ni protest ma'am or complaint, ginahold namo na ang pagissue sa 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 COA. Kay gusto namo, we want it to be cleared sa ilaha. So ingan ang amo ang proseso?
Halap na ko ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Among nakita diri sa IPIL, na ay na retain, na ay na 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 extend ang ilahang term. Sulod sa two kabulan, no? Tapos ang uban, muhawa na unsa na siya ma'am, nga dilik mga kay may hatagi may ug idea gamay anak ma'am.
Ah uh pursuant to twenty twenty-one national guidelines, ang usaka community pwede sila ma'am, in case, in kani. Pananglitan ang sama, wala pa ka proseso within that six months. Then mo expire na ang term sa iyahang predecessor. So na ang community or the council of elders will issue a request to the NCIP to issue the holdover certificate. And we allow that for three months.
Okay ma'am, kanibatanan IPMR diri sa lungsod sa IPIL ma'am? Niagiban siyang endorsement sa tuang council of elders or just the NCIP who selected?
No ma'am, it should be emanate, it should emanate from the council of elders. Community gina ma'am. It is not NCIP, kasi kami sa NCIP, we are just to facilitate. In fact ma'am, kung wala sila request for selection, dilik mi pwede magkuwan sa ila maghistoriang o sa sana inyong mga selection, no, delete na namo. Because we want to preserve no ang ilahang customeri laws. Kay pwede, decision sa council or the indigenous political structure, pwede sila mamagutang ug IPMR, pwede po delete.
Yes ma'am, uh it na lang ma'am.
Apo.
Uh na anay termination, ang council of elders removing Haji Hapid. Ah, naanay termination ang Council of Elders removing Haji Aped?
So far ma'am, wala, wala minadawat.
Wala minadawat.
There was no removal from the Sama, from the Sama. So kaysa ang Sama, ingani ma'am, the one who choose, selected Haji Aped is the Sama I C C I P's. So they are the right person also sa pagpapahawa sa iyahang. But ma'am, there is a process in order para ma, for, for his removal. So, it is stipulated sa ilahang local guidelines.
So, inaniman dire sa ipil ma'am no? Mauni ang kuwan, mauni siya ang senaryo. Ah, gin, tangtangan no? Si Haji Aped, ah, sa authority being ipanglima. Wala na siya, din na siya member sa Council of Elders. Ah, panalitan o mahitabo ma'am nga, siaguyod ang mapuli no? Kay given na namaguyod ayang kuwan no? Ah, unsaka hay mamahimong, ah, senaryo sa lungsod sa ipil nga, kin sa iyahang serbisyoan? Only the Sama or the other, other kuwan, tribes?
Ah, ma'am, since they agreed on term rotation, Sama, maskin kin sa ang molinkod, serbisyoan niya ang upat ka tribo. So regardless kung unsang kuwan nila no? Then ma'am, since nga kuwan, siguro it is in the best position ang Sama I C C I P's nga may history, because until now nga naaraku dire, we did not receive any protest or mga disqualification para kay Haji Aped from the Sama I C C, Sama. We are referring that to their term, kasi this is their term rotation po.
Ah, may think, ah, may concerns si Honorable Boy? Yes, Honorable Boy, your goodness?
Ako, ah. Ah, eleven. Hey, wala, ah, at.
Ma'am.
Anyone for the staff ni maratabang ni Honorable Boy? Dali, bisag dali ni magprotest kay naamo ang solat, nadawat si Haji Aped, Julie ten minute po, almost one year. Pero gisad ya dyan inyo ma'am? Inyo, inyo dyan manggabuhat, ngano aron maka-kupik, kin sa missignatura niya. Nada si Alsri Muhammad, naba ma'am. Si Jekwan, si Alsare Zenudin, naba ya. So sama nga siya, sama. Pagka, tagpa ngay magdaw na, so kung i, ikuwanin na, ibusli dadiyuna meaning murag kamure, magmagnipulit sa I C C I P's, dire sa ipil. So, on this time, ang tungod bang, bisag in na nako, dili na komo, rasa. Atong ijan kung iana ang kahintan. Ikado ha ma'am? Ngano ang, ang sa bisito, gaset mo ng one term. Na dili na si Masmar Hamad. Nagtuterm siya, nag-entak atong damari, ngano nakalikod man siya. Naaman taiterm rotation, so kung basihan ang term rotation, bayas na na siya ma'am, ang tungod lang. Wala joy effective, eh, person sa term of rotation, dire sa ipil, kung dili, maniubalan, tapitila, katao, rasa, atong ijan. Wala, ako, dispirado ko, kay gatrabok ko, insakto, ah, honest, goodness and more, kanang God pering koman. So, ah, dili koman limbang, dili koman talimbong, dili koman buluang kay, dili kugusto buluangan. Katulad ma'am, kay kung yatagan ni mo na, kanang bisag idipor lang, sa Council of Elders, kanang probleman nila, si Masmar ten minute, si Ital ten minute, si Jonay di ten minute, boga'y manarisabang. Kay ang, among customary is very gracious and meaningful nga, how to solve the conflict. Unlike sa tunggabang may, kung na kay kuwan na, ikaw na daw. Kung na kay bayad, ikaw ang maayahay. So katulad, thank you.
Okay, sige. Thank you no? Before nga maestorat mo si Attorney Idiang, ah, I would like only to emphasize on the customary laws, no? Customary laws, mangyuna, so, ang.
Excuse me, for that, ah, I would like to.
Hello, ma'am.
Honorable.
Ay, yes.
Sa pakay, anto'd kami na apil may kalibu ganin. Accordingly, the IP, IPMR selected will serve all the four tribe, kuwan, kining ansan eh?
Yes po.
All the four tribes, no? Oh, niya karoon, ang, ang malibog me kay the IPMR nga selected, no? Inyong ipalinkod, hal. Ang susan niya pagserbisyo atong elders nga ni expel sa iya. Accordingly, he was expelled eh, diba? He was expelled. Oh, niya karoon, pagserbisyo, sa pagserbisyo na sa mga tao nga ni expel sa iya.
Okay.
So, naapel may kapugan eh.
Yes sir. Expelled siya sa other tribe, siguro no? But that is subject for valid, sir, that is subject for validation, kanang ilahang ginahistoria. Because, ah, kung ge-expelled nila sa ilang organization, that has nothing to do with NCIP. Kasi ang NCIP regardless u gun sang imo hang.
Yeah, ang serbisyo manggunna, is IPMR. And, and IPMR selected, gagapili sila sa ilang, ilang representative through Council of Elders, diba?
Yes sir.
Kin sa gapili sa, through Council of Elders. So ang Council of Elders, kung ge-exp, kung ge-expel ang ilang, na, ambot lang, kamauisplika pas ako, kalibu.
Sir, ang nag-expelled is an organization. It is not the indigenous political structure.
Ang IPMR unsama na siya?
Ang IPMR is the representative of the community of which ang nag-expelled sa iya is the other tribes. It is not the Sama tribe of which he represent, he is now representing.
Sa pa, sa pa. Ang Council of Elders, unsama na siya?
Council of Elders, these are the leaders nga gi-validate sa NCIP.
Pero accordingly.
Supreme ang ilaha. From the supreme, because they have been claiming that is their organization, supreme council regardless u gun sang imo hang tribo. Ang pamutan unato karoon ang Sama karoon, nagpa-appil ba moan ng supreme council? Are you included it that supreme council? Because they are in the best position nga maestoria, kasi kami, dili mo sulting nga, naka-appil sila o wala. But is a supreme council. What we are talking is here, is the indigenous political structure, the bearer, the bearer of the customary laws of each tribe. So karoon, we cannot defend on the Sama, kasi kung pananglitan, si Haji Aped nagpalalum, nagpailalumba siya sa maong supreme council kay sila ang nag-expelled sa iyahang, sila ang nag-suspense sa ilaha. So kung ang IPS, ang hisgutan mo, the culture bearer of the Sama, wala minadawat nga ge-expelled siya sa iyahang tribo. But ge-expelled siya sa supreme council, but not the tribo which he is representing as Sama. So kana lang, so ako, we are not in the position to be answering that, kasi dili kami ang nag-expelled, it is the supreme council.
Yes, Honorable Farida, your goodness?
Apo.
We have heard from Mama Rita, my classmate.
Yes ma'am.
Um.
Hi, si Farida man.
Haji Aped Muhammad is also a member of the supreme council.
I just don't know ma'am.
And most of these council of leaders, ipanglimas from the Sama tribe are members of the supreme council. And based on the statement of Mr. Mabul, ah, some of those who expelled Haji Aped were Sama, from the Sama tribe. So, naglibog mi karoon ma'am. Um, what if, what if, as you have said, you have affirmed the selection.
Yep.
Ah, of Haji Aped. What if the legislative council would not take action on it? Since, um, as for us, siguro basma ayop ang ah, i-resolve sa ang tanan issues before letting him, ah, before we accept him into the legislative council. Kanang ako ang panglantao. Thank you ma'am.
Ah, sige, ah, thank you for that. I forgot no, ako mani classmate si Mam Farida.
I think, ah.
We are classmate here since grade one, grade two. Dire ko sa ipil.
Honorable Ram.
So I would suggest.
Excuse me, I think na'yon mo gusto mo story ako sa Sama.
From the Sama tribe. Sige, palihub bi, historihi bi. Kay customary manggunni. Ah, dire, dali doon. With, ah, Mr. Chair?
Sir, may have the floor now?
Murag, ganiya pagyut na naglibog ani. Ah, salam alaykum warahmatullahi ala waala katuo. Habang atay manghod ko Muslim, ug mayong buntag kanin yong tanan, sir. Ah, inganin na sir, ang supreme council of elders o ang council of, ah, ka, validated, ah, council, ba, validated council of elders sa NCIP, lahi siya sa supreme council of elders. Bali duha ka grupo na sir. So karoon kay, di't man nabilong si Haji Al-Hapid sa NCIP, council of elders, bali, validated by the NCIP, lahi siya sa supreme council of elders. Inganan na siya. Bisan ako sir, ako gani, apil giha pun kuwan na, sa kanang duha nga kuwan, nga grupo. So kung pananglitan si Al-Hapid Muhammad kay nahawa siya dito sa supreme council of elders, wala'y labot ang council of elders sa NCIP. Lahi siya, ananas siya. Ug pananglitan pod, katung ni agi nga panahon ata pun irespeto ang lain-lain manag tribo. Kay nakaduha man nakalingkod ang Subano, ug duha pod nakalingkod, kaduha pod kalingkod ang Kulibogan. So, ang Sama logyakan, kaduha po sila molinkod, tak duha duha po sila. As equal share, so nganong ato mampung libogon nga, nakaduha ng Subano, nakaduha ng Kalibogan. Duha po ang Sama, loguha po ang yakan, para perba, wala'y lamangan. Inganan na siya. Ah, kay katung, first nga ni lingkod guyot, si Perfektoginusaw. First, ang chicken, si, isa, isa, Sahisa Uto, ni balik na po si Rolando Gasal. Karoon si Rashid Bual. So karoon, ug pananglitan Sama na pod, ayop pod na to sa mukon ang Sama. Kay ang Sama raman pod ang makapahawa sa Sama. Oo, dili pod, kita mga Kalibogan o Yakhan o Subano, mag-witness lang ta, ngaro makita pod na to, kung unsa pod ang ilahang kaayong molinkod. Ingana, dili kay, ato pong sa mukon o molinkod ang Sama, dili ingato.
Justice, Honorable Farida, your goodness?
Okay, thank you sir.
Ah, you are representing the Sama tribe, diba?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So what is your stance by nanin kang Haji Aped? Na isa ba kasa nag-expelled sa iyahang, boto ang ma-expelled siya?
Ah, ako ma'am, gusto kita ko nga makapuli na pod ang Sama tribe. Kay nga no? Do kay na pod bayagga, ga, serbisyo o gusto na pod nga, mga kalinkod pod ang Sama para makita pod sa katauhan, kung unsa pod ang kaayos sa Sama lang molinkod. Hinoon kining mga kuwan, okay man unta sir, ug pananglitan, ang magpahawa kay Al, Al-Hapid Muhammad, nga isig ka tribo rapod niya, okay ra. Pero ug lain pong na tribo, dili pod pwede nga pahawa on si Al-Hapid o kater minute on si Al, Al-Hapid Muhammad, dili pod bayay mayong ingato. Okay, kami nga Sama, katung pagselection sir, wala guyot min, bisan isasama nga, dili na mo siya palinkuron. Disupport ang guyot na mo si Al-Hapid Muhammad sa Sama tribe. Inganan na sir, thank you, mayong buntag.
Mr. Chair? Yes, um, I think, um, siguro, um, kuwan na, dagan na tag, na takal na, I think na siguro maybe maglan siya ta, so maybe thirty, thirty minutes recess, no? Thirty minutes recess. I think na siguro maybe maglan siya ta, so maybe thirty, thirty minutes recess, no? Thirty minutes recess.